Good afternoon, everyone. It's July the 8th, 2019. Our regular monthly board meeting, and we'd like to welcome everybody here today. We appreciate all of you coming out. And we're gonna start, as we always do, start our meeting out with prayer and pledge. So I'm gonna ask Brenda Vaughn to do the pledge, and I'm gonna ask Lynn Green to start us out with her prayer.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you this evening as humble as we know how, begging your forgiveness for our sins. Father, we're thankful, so thankful that we live in a country that we can carry on business like this and try to take care of our neighbors, friends, and citizens of McDowell County. Father, we pray that you'll guide us this evening, that we make the decisions that you'd have made. And, Father, we pray that you'd guide us in the days to come. Bless our servicemen and women all across the world, fathers, as they fight for our freedom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing we need to do tonight, our agenda is approve the minutes. What's the pleasure of the board on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as stated.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we need to approve the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board on the agenda? Everybody's had a chance to look at it, I think, and so what's the pleasure of the board on it?
Mr. Vice Chairman, if we may add a request from the sheriff under new business and our administrative items, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. We'll add that on administrative items. What's the pleasure of the board?
We approve the agenda without addition.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. We will start out with our appointments tonight. First one that we have on our schedule is the recognition of the courthouse first responders. And we had a little excitement the other day up at the courthouse, and we had a great response from a great team of our emergency services. Just so happened Marvin Hancock, which is one of our EMS guys, happened to be riding by, I think, and saw the smoke coming out, and so it was a quick response, and we appreciate the hard work on that. And we're gonna let Craig Walker. All I was seeing was William Keller. But anyway, we're gonna let Craig Walker come up in William's place tonight and help us recognize all these people that were involved in that.
Thank you for having us tonight. On behalf of all the emergency personnel, we certainly do appreciate that, for coming up and recognizing each and every one of them for their outstanding work they've done. I wanted to give a brief synopsis of kind of what happened that day. This was on 6/29/1342, and 911 Center received a call. That would have been Sergeant Reel and her team, Nancy Bruner and Brandy Duncan. They received a call then of smoke coming from possibly the basement of the courthouse. That call was dispatched within one minute to Marion Fire Department, along with Nebo Fire Department, Glenwood Fire Department, PG Fire Department, McDowell Counter Rescue Squad, and McDowell EMS, and also Glenwood Fire Department with that. So all of them departments responded. Marion Fire Department actually was arrived on the scene within a minute of the dispatch call with the first engine. I think Amy Hutchins was actually on that and several others. It was first initial with also Marvin Hancock, with our EMS supervisor there. Identified the fire, which I think initially looked like a bush burning. I can say I've been a county employee for 26 years, and I didn't know that window was there. I had no idea that that window was behind that bush, but they quickly identified the basement fire and got a hose line let out. And actually, I feel confident, as far as looking on the inside of that fire and the inside of that building, if that had progressed inside that basement with that spiral stairwell that come up, we would have lost files and probably at least that second floor office area. So it was a great job done by everybody there. As far as the whole response of that, just so I don't miss anybody, Marion Fire Department, Nebo Fire Department, Glenwood Fire Department, Hankins Fire Department, McDowell County Sheriff's Office, McDowell EMS, McDowell Rescue, I think McDowell Rescue actually forced a door on the courthouse, PG Fire Department, Woodlawn Fire Department, and Marion Police Department was all on the scene. And just outstanding job done by all. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We do have Terry DePorster here. Terry, would there be any comments you'd like to make on?
Again, I just want to say thank you from the county. I mentioned to Craig tonight that I think that's the first recordable fire with damage that I can remember in 25 years. Now, we've had fire calls there, but no fires. But the response you made, made the difference on the operations of McDowell County, because that was a major hub inside of that room. And your response, it shows what McDowell County volunteers, paid staff, emergency personnel, rescue, law enforcement, it shows the potential. Number one, they recognize the facility, and they recognize the risk of the facility. And their quick actions made the difference. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thanks for your response.
We've got, in my opinion, and I think our board's opinion, probably the best emergency services in the state. And we appreciate all the hard work you guys do, and you certainly don't get paid enough for what you do for us. Ashley, as county manager, do you have anything you'd like to say? We will, we would like to get up and have our board have a picture made with you guys, if it's okay with y'all.
Just quickly, from our perspective, staff level, that's a call you never want to hear that your courthouse is on fire, or any other building for that matter, but Craig called that Saturday. If I could have flown there, I would have, because in that moment, you just, you fear the worst. And thankfully, the call came in right on scene, almost immediately, and it could have been a lot, lot worse based, you know, what Craig had said. But again, our hats are off for the fast response. I know the court officials, being Ms. Adams clerk of court, and the judges, as far as I understand, they had court operations the next day, they had grand jury in the lower level the next day. And so they were able to move on as if nothing happened. Again, thank you very much. I shook hands that day. I was so excited with the response to those there, and we couldn't shake everyone's hand, but just from staff's perspective and behalf of county staff, just thank you for all that came out and helped us out that day.
We were having a bad week that week, and then when this happened, it was just, oh, Lord. Now all we need is about $7 million to hit the burn down. But anyway, we appreciate the quick response that you guys showed us on that, and gosh, you saved us, and we do appreciate it. We'll see if any of the other board members want to say a word or two.
Not only did they quickly respond and get the fire out, but when you talk about very little damage, even the files didn't take on much water. And those that did, they weren't hurt, they were able to be dried out and whatnot. So, I mean, you didn't go in there just to haphazardly throw in water everywhere. You took care of everything, including the contents, and we appreciate it. That would have been a nightmare.
How many, I know Marion Department responded to that, Fire Department, Donnie, did your department respond as well?
Yeah, I think we did.
And any others?
Hankins and Nebo.
Hankins and Nebo, both. Okay. Well, good. Thank you very much.
I was coming through the gorge, coming back from Louisville that day, and I got a call from Ashley. I'm like, ah, it's on a Saturday, what is going on? He said, and, you know, the gorge, there's just no cell service. He said something about the courthouse on fire. I said, well, it's brick and mortar. And all of a sudden, dead. Nothing else. Are you still there? So I waited, I got back to Marion, and he sent me a text, and he said it had a courthouse fire, and says very minimal damage. And I called him later on, and, you know, you worry, we just have renovations, building your courtroom, everything going on, it's like, now we have a fire. What's going on? And, but when he explained to me, you know, what had happened and the response, I said, it does not surprise me one bit, the response and the care, because one of the other teachers had come back, he said, man, they got the whole town shut down. He said, there's fire trucks everywhere, what's going on? I said, just little marshmallow roast at the courthouse. He said, do what? And I said, no, I said, they had a fire at the courthouse. He said, well, I hope everything's okay. But, you know, we say it kindly, jokingly, but, you know, there's, and you said it, Craig, there's a lesson to be learned in that burning bush. There's a burning bush in the Bible, it's talked about, and there's a lesson in that. And there's a lesson in that it looked like a bush is on fire. And Marvin, just, you know, it's by the grace of God that he left when he did and went out. So nothing happens, you know, things happen for a reason, and God has people in the right place at the right time. And you, I appreciate each and every one of you, I wasn't here, but just working with yous over the years, I know the care that you would have taken, you know, had there been an actual, you know, work and fire in this building, because there's vital records that'd be hard to be replaced, and there's just things there that we could have lost. But I appreciate each and every one of you.
On a quick response, I got a phone call that there was a fire at the courthouse. I don't know what's going on, but there's a fire at the courthouse. So I was in the yard. I got through the house, got my keys, went back, jumped in my car. I live on Bethel Church Road in Glenwood, and by the time I got to 221, he was calling me saying, fire's out. He said, you heard about the fire, the fire's out. That did not take me long, so that was the response, just in a timeframe of how y'all moved. It was amazing to me, because by the time then I got back to my house, Ashley had called BJ, and he said, Ashley's trying to get a hold of you, the fire's out. And I said, is that not amazing? You know, because when you hear the courthouse is on fire, knowing the age of our courthouse, knowing how quickly old buildings seem to go, it was scary, especially, like he said, since we'd just built onto it at a goodly portion of money, and that's just a corner. Can you imagine to replace the whole thing? So certainly do appreciate, appreciate your dedication. The teamwork is unreal in this county. Nobody is a big man, a little you. Y'all work as a team, and that is something to be proud of. Very proud of what y'all do. Thank you.
Craig, would you introduce your staff that's with you tonight, and each fire chief that's here tonight introduce their staff, so we can recognize each and every one of you?
So we have Deputy Director Jones, EMS Assistant Angie Wright, 911 Manager Amberly Buff, 911 Sergeant Amory Reel, Communicator Nancy Bruner, and Communicator Brandy Duncan on my staff.
Thank you.
Let me catch one more, I didn't see him back there. I'll take Marvin Hancock, too. He's EMS supervisor.
Don't forget Marvin.
You want to do the fire chiefs, too?
Sure, go ahead.
So we have Marion Fire Chief Ray McDaniel, Chief Donnie Tipton, Chief Terry DePorster from Hankins Fire Department, and Ricky Wright's the director of the rescue squad.
Chief, you want to introduce your people?
And I've got Brandon Howke here, Stephanie Wissnet, Earl Durkey, Amy Hutchins, Corey Presnel, and Cody Durkey's also works for the rescue squad and one of our volunteers.
Thank you, guys. Time to catch a picture. Let's, if you guys will, let's come up and get a picture. I know Brenda's wanting to get a picture.
I'm just dying. I mean, David's not here, he's coming.
I'm waiting.
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 Yes.
I'm smiling.
I caught you peeping.
One more.
One more.
You ready?
On your mark, get set, go.
Cheers.
Thank you.
I don't have any brains.
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 One more.
One more.
You ready?
On your mark, get set, go.
Cheers.
Thank you.
I don't have any brains.
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 Okay, we're ready for our 5:15 appointment, which we are running just a tad behind on.
And we've got Ms. Tawanna Ramsey here tonight, and she has been working with our emergency services for many years and been a valuable asset, I think, to the EMS and the, I guess, all of the bad hurricanes and storms and tornadoes and everything that we faced, have faced over the past few years. It's got crazy around here, but I think she's been very active in all of this, all these big storms that have been going on, and been a valuable asset to us. And we're gonna let Craig get up and introduce her, and we've got something special for her tonight, so we'll let Craig go ahead and introduce her and talk a little bit about her.
Thank you, sir. Tawanna Ramsey, to sum this up, is kind of the unseen hero for McDowell County. A lot of people never know who Tawanna Ramsey was, but she's our area coordinator and was up till June. And the one thing that myself, Terry Young, Carol Himpel, and William would all say is, this is what kept us straight. Whenever you have a bad call, you had a search, we had flooding, whatever, you may see us there, but Tawanna was the one on our phone, Tawanna was the one saying, guys, think about this before you do it, or she's been there and done that. The other thing that Tawanna has done for this county as far as financially, would probably unmeasurable for as far as the EMPG funding, and the funding that we get from the state is key because of her, and because of her making sure that we have our paperwork right, our exercises right, and has done a lot, not only for emergency services for this county, and we really appreciate it, and we're really gonna miss her as far as in her position, but Tawanna Ramsey.
Let's give her a hand. And we've got a little resolution that we want Barry McPeters to read to you tonight, and we'll present that to you.
Put you on the spot. Tawanna, about five or six years ago, five years ago, I retired, and lo and behold, walked into countryside, and Tawanna's there for my retirement, special for me. She probably just visited, and I know she didn't come down just for me, but maybe she did. But it was always good to see her, and, you know, you knew you had somebody on your side when she showed up, Jimmy, her husband, you know, just a great, great asset to this county, both of them, but Tawanna, we just want to say thank you. And tonight, we have a resolution of appreciation for Ms. Tawanna Ramsey. Whereas Ms. Tawanna Ramsey began her career in North Carolina Emergency Management on November the 28th, 1988, as Secretary Four, and whereas Ms. Ramsey later became an Administrative Assistant One on September the 1st, 1998, and whereas on January the 1st, 1999, Ms. Ramsey became an Emergency Management Planner specializing in earthquakes, and whereas on July the 1st, 2007, to the present, Ms. Ramsey has served as an Area 12 Coordinator serving the following counties of Ash, Avery, Caldwell, McDowell, Mitchell, Watauga, and Yancey. And whereas, Ms. Tawanna Ramsey has been instrumental in assisting McDowell County Emergency Management in meeting their annual requirements for obtaining Emergency Management Performance Grant Funding, and whereas, Ms. Ramsey has assisted McDowell Emergency Management during multiple disasters and high-impact events, including winter storms, wildfires, hazards, material incidents, and most recently, the floods of 2018. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby express their appreciation to Ms. Tawanna Ramsey for the hard work, dedication, and years of support for McDowell Emergency Management, and congratulations on her retirement of 30 years of dedicated service with North Carolina Emergency Management adopted this day, 8th of July, 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get a picture made. First, let us go ahead and, do I hear a motion, we adopt this resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Come on. Yeah, come on, Jim. Well, you're part of her, Dave. You don't want him up here, do you?
I never said that. No, in people's mouths.
Still got that fire to her, don't you?
We're gonna move around here.
Tony, what they're saying is your wife, you need to come up this way.
No, we're going to say Lynn.
You need to be two and two.
Need to be two and two.
Step forward, Lynn. There you go.
All right. I guess we should turn this around.
Yeah. Yeah, hold that way.
Thank you.
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, thank you. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, we've got just a few minutes before the next appointment. We could move to, let's move down to new business, and we've got a board appointment vote out of May on new business.
You have your ballot, I don't mind, I've got it in front of me. You have your ballot there. You have a second reading for Planning Board. You have one application from Tommy Stamey, McDowell Tech Board of Trustees, second reading as well. You have one vacancy there. You had an application from William Bach, Harriet Thomas, Corey McKinnon, and Roger Wesley. The Jury Commission had one vacancy, it's the second reading. You had two applications from Larry Lidle and Zach Wallace. And then you have a voting delegate request from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference in August. We need a delegate from that as well.
Okay, let's do the board appointments first.
Okay.
For the Planning Board, it was unanimous vote for Tommy Stamey. For the McDowell Tech Board of Trustees, it is unanimous for William Bach. And for the Jury Commission, it is unanimous for Larry Lidle.
Okay.
And now, we need a voting delegate for the annual conference.
Do we have any volunteers for that? Brenda, phone. Didn't Brenda do that last year?
I did it last year.
Do you mind to do it again?
I don't mind.
I'll make that motion. Second. We've got a motion in a second for Brenda Vaughn. All in favor? Aye. Is that all, Madam Clerk? Okay. That takes care of that. Let's see, what about item? We have time to do administrative items. Item B?
We can.
Okay, well, we turn it over to county manager.
Maybe the best thing to do would be the request from the sheriff's office first. Last month, you approved the sale of some older firearms, and this is sort of a follow-up to that. Do you have the chief deputy here, if you have any questions? They have asked to, they're transitioning their firearms, and so you have that request where they are transitioning from the Glock to a .357. I got that right, or is it backwards?
It's from Glock .357, same Glock on.
Okay, you tell I know a lot. But you have the request there, and the resolution as well, that would allow that transfer. So what we're proposing to do are trade in the current weapons towards the purchase of new ones. We're asking to sell seized weapons as well, and we're asking to sell ammunition that we can no longer use with the new weapons. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we'll, at the end of the day, end up with new weapons. We're disposing of things we will not be using anymore, and hopefully coming out as even as we can be.
You've heard the presentation from county manager. What is the position of the board on this?
It's my understanding that the ammunition is gonna be sold to Marion PD.
Marion PD, we talked to Lieutenant Hartman, who said they were getting ready to make the purchase for .357, and so we wanted to be able to, hopefully be able to sell them at a little better cost than what they've been getting if they were purchasing directly.
Okay, I'd just like to make that clear, that it's not being sold to the topic, it's being sold to another armed enforcement agency. And also, the weapons are gonna be sold to Craig Firearms.
To Craig's Firearms, yes.
Right, okay. I'd move, we approve. Got a motion?
Second.
Any other comments to be made on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Quickly, I'll go through the next few items here. You have a recommendation from the Finance Director on our Financial Monitoring and Accounting Segregation of Duties policy. It's a mouthful, that any electronic payment requests be made in person, and that is highlighted in yellow on your policy there. Typically, we do a first and second reading. We might ask you go ahead and adopt this tonight, just feel it's good practice.
You've heard the request of the county manager on that. What's the position of the board?
I'll make a motion, and we'll go ahead and adopt this tonight.
Second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, just a couple more. You have the county's, I call it the pay plan, it's our position plan, that lists all the different positions in the county. There's two reasons for bringing it to you tonight. One, with the recent salary adjustment that was made across the board, it was suggested that we adjust our entry-level salaries for the folks that would be coming in, just to kind of keep that up to date, so we're not behind for new hires in the future. There are a few position... for new hires in the future. There are a few position changes, as far as title changes and relocations as well, but it's mostly to bring up the starting pay. And if you do approve this, we would ask that you approve it effective on the 16th.
You've heard the recommendation on staff on that. What's the position of the board?
Move that we approve pay plan effective July 16?
Yes, sir.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Also, a question, and I fully agree with raising start pay or increasing that. I just don't want it to become where start pay, and I haven't looked at it closely enough to where, you know, you have somebody, I know they got a 3.75% raise this year, but somebody starting out is making $500 less than somebody that's been here 15 years. I just don't want to set a precedence. They should never be within that range unless they move up.
And that's something we looked at where we wouldn't go, someone wouldn't start above and beyond someone else that's been here a while, like you said, and we feel confident that we're not going to set ourselves up for a situation that way. If it was a much higher percentage, I think we might have some issues.
Yeah. Okay, we had a motion and a second on that. What's the place of the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Two brief more items. Mr. Vice Chair, there's a water system leak adjustment request. You have the memo there from the, from the property owner for their irrigation system leak. Request waiver.
Heard a request of the waiver from staff. What's the position of the board?
Move to approve.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last item is the EMS write-offs that we are required to do when they're no longer collectible.
Having reviewed those write-offs, I've moved that we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's all.
That's all I have.
Okay, we will go now to our 5:30 appointment, which is a Planning Department update from our esteemed Ron Harmon.
Thank you, sir. I'll give you a fairly brief update of what's going on with the Planning Department, most importantly, the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted unanimously at their June meeting to recommend a change in the subdivision ordinance, to change the major and minor distinctions. Currently, what you have is a minor subdivision is any lot configuration of three to 20 lots, and a major is 21 lots and over. And the board would like to recommend that that become two to 10 lots as a minor, and 11 and greater would be a major. This would just help, as development continues to grow in the county, this would help staff to be able to keep a closer eye on things and make sure that we capture everything and make sure that everything is being followed. With that, too, the board would like, or the board would like to recommend that the review fee on a minor subdivision be $10 per lot, and that the review fee, which for a major subdivision, goes before the Planning Board, would be $400. In order for this to happen, the Board of Commissioners would have to hold a public hearing, and so we're asking that you consider that, look to do that in the near future. The other update is work is still ongoing on the revision slash unification process of the late James Protection Ordinance. What the board's trying to do is take the three ordinances we have and put them into one document to hopefully clear up confusion, because that's, that seems to be our biggest problem, is confusion. And as we're working, we're trying to clear up some of the loopholes that we feel like are there. The board is to the point where we're starting to talk changes. I hope to get a draft summary to the board this month, and hopefully in the next couple of months, get that to you for approval and/or adoption. The last update is the panhandling ordinance. The County Manager had talked to Fred Coats, the County Attorney, and right now, the way it sits, it looks like unless it's a serious, serious public safety issue, we're better off to hold off and not adopt an ordinance than that. And I'll turn that over to the County Manager to answer any other questions about that.
And I'm not going to turn it over. We do have the County Attorney here. Yeah. That can speak to this. You do have a draft ordinance or template ordinance maybe provided by the County Attorney, based on his research, if this is a topic you would like to pursue, but it might be worth hearing from the attorney on this item.
Yeah, let's hear from County Attorney. Mr. Fred Coats, thank you for being with us.
Hi, folks. I agree with Ron about the not trying or not adopting an ordinance unless it is extremely clear we have a serious problem. And the reason for that is courts have routinely said that soliciting, soliciting money, et cetera, on public streets or medians on public streets is free speech and is allowed. And unless there is a major problem with safety, then it cannot be regulated by the county or the city. Doing research, I just got over the weekend a 93-page paper regulating panhandling written by a professor and an attorney here in North Carolina, and it goes through the entire history. And I can't tell you every word, except that it's complicated, and it may be addressing, or it may be a solution for a problem that really doesn't exist to a serious extent. By that, I mean unless it is a serious problem, a serious safety problem, then I think you're better off just not adopting an ordinance for that. Now, lots of times, folks who are panhandling end up filing lawsuits against cities and counties, and end up getting some folks to help them, and they end up getting substantial attorney fees awarded to them against the city or the county. So that's, that's a concern that you have to be looking at, too, if you adopt an ordinance of that nature. That's not constitutional.
What happens with the North Carolina General Statute that covers that?
Well, nobody, to my knowledge, has actually litigated that in detail. And I have not, I know the ordinance you're talking about, I have not researched it in detail. But we do have one. We do have one that sets a insurance requirement, et cetera, I believe. But I think we may, if we do adopt one, that might be what you'd be wanting to look at. You know, that not really adopting one by us is just what the statute says.
Fred, what, there's a difference to me in someone standing out there holding a sign than someone approaching a vehicle and asking for money or asking for, you know, and there's some women, I know it doesn't intimidate me much, but there's a lot of times women get scared when someone like that approaches their vehicle and asks for money. So how would we address that issue?
Well, again, it's got to be a substantial problem, whatever that is. It's got to be a serious problem that happens on a regular basis. Again, walking up to a window and saying, "I want money," may or may not be to one person a problem. It may be to another person. And again, that's, how do you regulate that?
That was my question, because North Carolina General Statute 2175B says, "No person shall stand or lorder in the main travel portions, including the shoulders and median of any state highway or street, excluding sidewalks, or stop any motor vehicle for the purpose of soliciting employment, business, or contributions from the driver or occupant of any motor vehicle that impedes the normal movement of traffic on the public highways or streets."
That's why we don't need an ordinance.
Exactly.
We've already.
We just need this enforced.
We just need this enforced.
Yeah, that's why we don't need an ordinance. Now, whether that's.
I agree with, I agree with you.
Whether that statute's constitutional or not, I can't tell you that.
But that would throw it on the state.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, so.
We just need this enforced for the time being.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So all of them is enforced. They just need enforced?
I wonder if we had that conversation before about, about the ordinance, actually. And one of the things we brought up was there's actually a general statute about if they walk, and approach a vehicle or impede traffic, and especially after a tornado.
Well, this says they can't stand.
Now, when it comes to places like shopping centers and parking lots, that's private property, but.
Yeah, that's something I think that the owner of the property, the less ordered property can control.
But they need to be aware that they have that authority.
I'd have to read that statute again, see if it applies to public vehicular area. It probably does.
Well, if it's a place like, let's just take Walmart for an example. All the manager has to say is, "You need to move on."
Yeah.
And then they can be arrested for trespassing if they stay.
What I've seen is some solicitation there at the intersection highway, and I've also seen it on the exit on 81, getting on Sugar Hill Road near the Pilot.
Well, the Pilot's the worst place in the world it is.
But they are in the median, and I had someone walk up towards me, and I just shook my head, and they kept walking.
I got out of the truck and told him to move on.
What, what I've seen a lot of lately is people coming up to you and giving you these sad stories about their mommas having cancer surgery tomorrow, and they've got to be in Tennessee or Virginia or Ohio, and they trying to gather up and up, and it's the same story, you know.
And then sometimes you see those people the next day at another intersection somewhere else.
Exactly, or leave that one and go to another part.
I mean, it's a fundraiser.
I can't speak for other intersections, but living there on Sugar Hill Road, I know that it's the same folks every time, and I know the vehicle that sets them out and picks them up, and I know that they take one to one intersection, one to the other, and they set them out, and they'll go down the road and sit and wait for a little while, and go back and pick them up again.
Or go into Walmart and use the air conditioner.
Yep.
So I, I think the statute would be a good place to start.
Thank you.
The statute does come to the fire departments, because when they do fundraising, it's boot drive and stuff like that, correct, or as they call it, and they, that's what.
You'll have to go back and read that.
Because it's done quite a bit in different places, because we were going to do that also, and we don't want to be in violation, but you want to protect them from being able to do fundraising for Christmas time and stuff, too.
There was no action requested to be taken tonight.
Unless you'd like to at this point.
I think we should table this, based on what you guys think.
I think we need to just research a little more, leave it from now.
I just, I think we need, I hate to put this off on the Sheriff's Office and Police Department, but the statute is on the books.
What's the place of the board?
Move that we table it.
Got a motion. Did we table it? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question about on the subdivision change? And I probably should have called you earlier about, how will this affect, we just went through a revale, and I know we got communities it's based, you know, whether it's a subdivision or not. How will that affect that in the future? Or will it affect anything with major minor? I know we got staffs here, but.
I don't think that would affect that.
Not the way.
All this is just procedural as far as what's allowed, lot size, road width, things like that.
Can we, he does have one more item before we move on, Mr. Vice Chairman, but is it appropriate to get maybe some direction on that request?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We probably, at this point in time, what's the board's position on it, that we look at it again, or get some more information on it? What's the place of the board on this?
Subdivision.
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 Does it need to be talked about anymore? Do we need to give them directions? Go ahead.
Do you want me to let you know the difference between major and minor, just so you kind of get an idea of what you're talking about?
I think that'd be good.
Okay, a minor subdivision is basically staff approval. You bring in anything, if we request, if we get a request up to 10 lots, it's reviewed in-house. The standards are the same for major and minor. A major subdivision goes before the Planning Board, so that the Planning Board can sit there and look at it, and more questions can be asked. It's just, it's a better safeguard now that development is starting to grow rapidly in the county.
Well, it's changing the fees is the big thing.
And the change of the fees. We want to do $10 for a minor subdivision review, which is the one to, or two to 10, and then 400 for staff review and planning board review, because it does require the planning board to look at it. And it allows us more time to be able to request supporting documentation such as settlement erosion control, highway engineer documents and things like that.
I'm prepared to vote on it myself tonight.
Well, it would keep us from having problems like we've had with some divisions in the past, especially with road construction and things like that.
Yes, sir.
So that it's up to par before it starts selling lots and what.
The more eyes that are on it, the better off it's going to be. Right. I agree.
That came from a request of fire departments, too, for planning board to look at that, because some of the roads went up.
Fire code now.
Yeah, and that was one of our things on our agenda for a couple of years now.
And we changed our subdivision ordinance to reflect Chapter 5 of the Fire Code two years ago.
Now, do we, do we have to have a public hearing just on the fee change?
No, we have to have a public hearing, because we're changing the major-minor differentiation.
So it needs to, we just need to wait on.
Have to set a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Move that we set a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is anything else?
The last item he had, we had a request, back up just a second, probably about three or four months ago, the county and city and Trails Association, based on your direction, started meeting pretty much monthly, talk about trail projects. To talk about the ones that are going on now, construction and maintenance, but really to talk more so about future planning and maybe more importantly, how to pay for them. And so in your, in your packet, you have a request from the Trails Association for an endorsement of two trail projects, and I think Ronald's got the detail about what those are. Maybe.
Yeah, the, to endorse the inclusion to be titled, this would become part of the Fonteflores State Trail. The trail section from the McDowell House to the Burke County Line, they request that be made in the amount of 1.3 million in state funding. And the second section, added to the state TIP, would be from Curtis Creek to Point Lookout in Old Fort, another $1.3 million request, and that would be suggested that the town of Old Fort make the same request in support of the inclusion.
And so what, what this process is, the state has essentially like a 10-year plan where they, they'll put road and rail and ferry and pedestrian, different projects in this massive document for each county in the state. And so this is a process that will start, I think, next week with our region, where we can say, hey, we'd like these two, or not these two, or whatever, projects included in the process. And all that means is that it's entered in essentially in a bowl of different projects, and that the local group will score them and recommend that they be included in the actual document after a lot of processing. So it could be years.
This is just a request.
It's a request. It kind of gets it in the hyper.
It doesn't lock us down to any kind of match money or anything at this point. So what's the place of the board on that?
Yeah, I understand it's, it's a letter of endorsement, basically.
That's right. So the RPO that you're a part of would vote on this at some point, as a recommendation or not?
Any other comments, questions?
These are two identified by the Trails Association.
I'll make a motion then, that we go ahead and endorse it.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks.
That was that, that was everything he had.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving now, it's running just a little bit late, we have Ms. Tammy Wiley here, item D under appointments for a property reevaluation update, and-
She can delegate.
Okay, I believe she delegated it to Tim.
Mr. Chair, thanks for having me. I'm Tim Kane, I'm the project director for the 2019 revaluation, which is now officially wrapping up. Wanted to let you know that we did have, since the previous commissioners' meeting, the Board of E and R has adjourned, listened to all the appeals. We do have a few straggler notifications that are going out this week, so that aspect of the project is done. We've also got the tax bills going out this week as a result of the 2019 revaluation, so that will be done in the next few days. And the tax department itself wanted to request for the board to consider advancing the eight-year cycle to a four-year cycle. And the reason for requesting that is it would minimize sticker shock as a result of the longer cycles, it would lessen impact of national trends in housing and financing, which is what a lot of counties saw and were impacted in '08, '09. And the shorter cycles allow for less uncertainty in budgeting, and it's fairer to taxpayers in the application of depreciation and changes in valuation. And so that's the extent of what I wanted to say tonight.
That's good. Mr. Chair?
That's something, if I may, that's been talked about a while, that I've, we've heard this board say throughout this process that you've wanted to go to that four-year cycle. And I think we looked it up, how many counties, if I may ask, are on a four-year now?
A majority are less than eight now.
So you see some with six, but most, if they're not doing eight, seem to be doing four. I think you've got one or two that are doing two years, but extremely largest. I think you've got the endorsement from staff of going to four-year, and we've heard it from all of you to do that. And I know there's been discussion about preparing for that process, which typically takes quite a bit of time, 30-plus months sometimes. And so there has been some discussion with Mr. Kane about maybe starting sooner rather than later on the preparation for that, to make sure we're ready for the next one. And I know there's been some discussion of what the next step might look like, and you could talk about maybe some recommendations with that, if that's appropriate.
I think we recently heard the numbers on, and I believe there's only a few counties left that are not going, have not went to a four-year reevaluation. So, you know, I think it, personally, I think it would please the taxpayer more to be on a four-year cycle than it would aid, because the big thing is the sticker shock of the tax increase. And so I think that would be an important issue to everyone.
A lot of change can happen in eight years, and those things that we fail to see during that period, it's a shock to everybody. You want to, would you want to talk a little bit to the work that needs to go into effect before that four-year cycle?
Well, basically, the planning is the most important aspect of it. There hasn't been a full measuring list, for instance, in 30-plus years. And so making sure that everything can be done efficiently, the planning and actually having, because your last revaluation was a limited scope, and it was done in 12 months. And so actually, planning first, repeatedly measure twice, cut once, kind of thing, so.
You know, there has been question, and I'll say this publicly tonight, I have heard concerns from people that didn't feel that we had looked at everybody fairly, and this would happen right away, and we would be moving on this very quickly and rapidly in this reevaluation, working on it over the next couple of years to be ready for the 2023.
Yes, sir.
And for those that felt like that maybe everyone hadn't been treated fairly, this should even up the chips for everybody. So it would be a progressive thing in that sense. Any other comments or?
No, I just say, you know, it's my 15th year being here, and I think every year, especially revale, we have talked about going to four-year, and we bring it up, but we never move. We bring it up and we never move. And it's always, like I said, that sticker shock to the, and being the chair of the board twice, I guess, Board of E and R, you know, you hear those complaints, and a lot of, I just don't understand, you know, why it went up. I said, well, you realize it's been eight years, and you've lived eight years pretty well under the radar, sort of say, and now this is what's happened. And they said, well, couldn't you go up a little bit every year? I said, well, that had been mentioned before, can't we raise something every year and stuff like that? But there's a lot of work involved in doing that. And I think a four-year is fair to the public, it's fair to the taxpayers, it's fair to our department, and it's to the process. And I feel that as chair of that board, is that we should be doing due diligence to the taxpayer and go to a four-year.
Well, it's, you know, it's not, it's not fair for one property owner to be physically looked at, and four or five houses around them.
That's right.
Maybe the same style house, same square footage and everything, not be looked at, and their value either is low or stay the same, and the one that is looked at go up. It's not fair to that taxpayer. The only fair way to do it is to look at all of them.
Yes. So at this point, the recommendation of staff is go to a four-year cycle. Any comments or from the board?
I'd move that we proceed. Second.
We've got a motion and a second to proceed with a four-year cycle.
Yes, sir. With the necessary field work that it takes to bring that about.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to a four-year cycle?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Brett Tim.
Keep the prayer running.
Okay, on, takes care of everything on the appointments. On new business, we have item C under tax matters. Mr. Wooten, do you want to?
Yes, sir, just a few rebills, releases, et cetera, for your approval this month.
Question approved, release of rebills?
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, under old business, item A, the Greenway Phase 3 update.
Yes, sir, just a brief update on this project as it quickly approaches completion. Mr. Harmon and his assistant, Ms. Melton, and I will be out on site tomorrow with engineer and the contractor to go over the project and discuss wrapping it up within the next couple of weeks. Mr. De Poister has always, also been out on the site with us recently to look at some of the maintenance issues that we could have in access and security, and also Susan Huskins from our Recreation Department. So our, what we're trying to do before it opens, and we are doing, is having a plan in place for the ongoing maintenance operation and security to where we don't cut the ribbon and forget about it, to where we have an obligation to maintain this asset and to keep it there as long as humanly possible. We do hope that it will be ready for the public enjoyment in the month of August. Again, we're getting close, and just appreciate everyone's patience with it. There has been a request, and we need probably to look at it with staff from the Trail Association, again, who's been a great help in this project, to maybe look at the possibility of an ordinance or some other regulation that would regulate dogs to where they would be leashed on the property. We may have, Mr. Coates Silli is here, we might have to do that by means of ordinance, but something we'll probably bring back next month, if that is the case. I think that's just a good practice for any type of walking trail to where they're not running at large. And so, again, great relationship there with the Trail Association, and we will coordinate with you and others on ribbon cutting and so forth.
Okay. We've heard the Greenway Phase 3 update. Is there any questions or comments from the board? If not, we'll move along to item B, which is the shooting range update.
A brief update, you do have an email from Mr. Gary Gardner, who's NC Wildlife's representative on this project. The last action this board took was to order an appraisal of the county property that was done, that appraisal was submitted to Wildlife, and right now, you see in the email, they are looking at the two appraisals to determine essentially an average of the value of the property. One of the, again, reading this email or summarizing it, a recent congressional bill was passed that would lower the state match for federal funding to 10% instead of 25%. And so that should help with some hurdles there with the cost and the development of that site. So that was good news, that that bill has passed and been signed by the president. And so we'll keep plugging away and communicating with them to make sure they're still working on it, and they are, but hopefully soon we'll see more than-
Is there any update from the DOT on the bridge or anything?
No, sir. I do know that I have spoken to DOT probably about two months ago, and they were working directly with NC Wildlife on the bridge design over Moody Creek there, but not since that communication from the district engineer about two months ago.
Okay.
Still working on it.
Any questions, comments on that?
You know, it's a good thing that they are willing to provide money for projects like that, it's just a shame that you can't be moving dirt with it. We've been waiting a long time.
Been waiting a long time. But anyway, any other comments? Move along to item C, water system plan.
Just a very brief update again, like to have mentioned the water projects on here. We've mentioned that Stacy Hill Road water project is complete. You had heard from Mr. De Poister a couple of weeks ago that since this project was completed between the new line constructed and the line we assumed operation of from the city, we've added 45 customers over the last few months. And so that's a huge percentage of growth for our small water system, but we continue to add new customers all the time there. One of the things we will be looking at in this budget year, two things really, we had paused the water intake permitting, something Mr. Harmon and I have been working on probably since we've been with the county. But we've been to meetings in Raleigh and had a lot of discussions about this, and will continue this year. Now that Stacy Hill is finished, we'll resume this planning and try to get that going again with Duke Energy and federal folks. The other item you've, we've talked about a couple of months ago was future water line extensions. We have an updated water system map, it's a huge file, and it's a little hard to see. But you see the scope of our system now, where it was very small to start off, and now we've reached the interstate, we're on Watson Road, South Creek Road, and it's growing to be fairly large system-wise, mileage-wise. It's hard to make out, but on the north side, there's little green dotted lines. Those are lines that we've looked at in the past, streets, roads, that might make sense to serve in the future. And so no recommendation, no request tonight, but we will be looking for grant funds and other means of applying for future extensions, because we don't want to stop where we are. So just a brief update.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, I think we pretty much have covered everything tonight, except citizen comments. We will now be taking citizen comments, or we have any, anybody that wants to say anything on the right side or on the left? If not, what's the pleasure of board?
Communications.
Oh, yeah, we got communications staff report. You got anything on that?
I do not have any tonight.
Is there anything that commissioners wish to speak about tonight? If not?
Question to adjourn.
I hear a motion to adjourn. Got a motion?
Sir.
Got a second. We are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to talk to us.